Quarter, today is Tuesday, May 28th. I thank you all for being here. If I can have everyone, please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you, everyone. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. DeGiovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome this evening. If there's any matter that we will be discussing tonight and you would like to speak on that matter, please fill out a card, which you can find at both ends at the end of council chamber. Fill it up and please submit it up here to staff. Thank you so much. All right, starting the agenda, the first item on the agenda is resolutions, number one, to accept and appropriate fiscal year 2000.
Presentations.
Oh, okay. Do I have that? Oh, I'm sorry. Presentations, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanchez, because you were very important to me. I wasn't going to forget you. All right. We have two presentations this evening, folks, and the first one is Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, otherwise known as CORA, and Officer of the Quarter Award, which we will, I'd like to, we're going to honor Daily City Police Officer Cody Lizana. If I can have Colosaria Henderson, the CORA Executive Director, come on up, please.
She unfortunately isn't here today, so my name is Celeste Mercado, and I'm the manager of Crisis Support Services.
Great, great. There's a microphone. We want to hear you in your full glory.
Hello. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. So my name is Celeste Mercado, and I'm the manager of Crisis Support Services, and I oversee our hotline and emergency response program, which is working with law enforcement and collaborating with them. So CORA is a domestic violence agency here in the county of San Mateo, and we receive about 10,000 calls countywide, and from those 10,000 calls, we get about 3,000 to 4,000 referrals from law enforcement. Our services are free and confidential for all victims and survivors of domestic abuse with their intimate partner. We have a great collaboration with law enforcement here in the county. We provide training, ongoing support, and referrals from them. We have services from counseling, emergency shelter, which someone can stay up to eight weeks, it's confidential, and it provides advocacy, advocates to support them throughout their journey to become stable and be safe from their abusive partner. We also have children's program, we have a YEA program, which is supporting youth. As many of you know, sometimes in youth are in their first relationship, they don't understand what is abuse, right? It's verbal abuse, it's social media abuse and all of that, so we provide ongoing education around that, right? We do safety planning with them as well, and how to be safe at their homes if they weren't ready to leave, and we provide that support to them. We have legal services as well, that has with family law matters, as well as restraining orders, and like I mentioned, all of our services are free to them and confidential. Every quarter, we offer an award to an officer of the quarter, and this award is chosen by our crisis counselors and our advocates to see an officer that goes beyond of just making a referral, someone that is there to support a victim in their most time of need, when they're in crisis mode, when they need someone to support them and listen to them and also see what they need. And our counselors choose one of many, many officers here in the county that goes beyond that. In this quarter, we chose Officer Lizana from Daily City as one of those officers.
My name's Kathy Anderson, and I'm retired law enforcement, and as Celeste said, there are so many referrals that we, that come in from law enforcement, and for us to choose somebody that goes above and beyond, what that means is the emotional support, the fact that an investigation is done and is done remarkably well professionally, that the victim actually feels the compassion and shares that with us. So I'm going to give you just a little highlight of the particular award. It occurred in January of this year, Officer Lizana was dispatched to a 911 call where a woman's ex-partner had broken into her residence, sexually assaulted her, held her against her will, and physically assaulted her. Officer Lizana first recognized that she was a Spanish speaker and connected her with a Spanish-speaking officer. Some of the things that he did is he also got a sexual assault counselor for her to sit with her while she disclosed the abuse. He also had her transported to the Keller Center, which is in the, next to the emergency room, and the Keller Center also does sexual assaults, so he connected her to that as well. She felt very supported by him, and the final connection that he made was to connect her to CORA so that she, that we could support her and offer her our services. So we're very proud of the work that you did, and we want to recognize you publicly. So here's your.
I would like, I would like to get a statement from the officer, and I see that there are other officers here, so after he makes the statement, if you can all come up, please, and accept this award with him and share in his glory, and I would like to get a picture. Officer Lizana, please, you have the floor, sir.
I would just like to say thank you very much.
Officer. Closer to the mics.
I care.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
I would just like to say thank you very much, and you know, we, at the Daily City Police Department, really appreciate the partnership with you, CORA, in providing services and resources to the folks in our community that need it the most, so thank you very much.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you should do Stephen.
There you go. You should get in, Vice Mayor.
Officer Lizana, I'm going to open it up for my counsel, my colleagues, to make any comments if they would like to. I'll first start off from my far right, Councilmember DeGiovanni.
First of all, I know that you guys in the domestic violence have been superior in handling these cases. I've heard it from when in the CORA works with Alice Cumbres and other victims that we've run into, that it goes unspoken, but for what you did and when you show compassion like that, Daily City sets themselves apart in our police department, and I've heard it from so many other places where they come back here to Daily City to be, to serve as a police officer. We are very humbled to have you here, and you serve our community with honor, and you treat people like your own family, and that's what these officers do at DCPD. I've seen it, I've heard it, I know it to be true. So thank you very much, and there's not enough to say than heartfelt thank you to you and your family, because you all serve, and thank you to these, you see it every day, and I know you're on the ground working, because I've sent people your way, so thank you so much, and thank you, our DCPD.
Thank you, Councilmember DeGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just congratulations on your work, and really shows your compassion and really in such a vulnerable state for this woman, you were able to connect her, and I hear from the organization right away, you went to the steps and went above and beyond, and it's not every day we get to hear what you do on the ground and to be able to touch the lives of individuals and families, especially as mentioned, in such a vulnerable state. And so thank you for your commitment, and thank you for giving back wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Dr. Rod.
I just want to say thank you, Officer Lizana. I guess sometimes people think that justice happens when an arrest happens, but the real justice happens when the aftermath of that trauma, and I think that's what you provided, provided services for this person, understanding the wellness and the well-being of this person, and that's where justice is not just a singular moment, but it's a process, so I just want to say thank you for all the efforts that you provided.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Ma'am, where, where did you serve before?
Resident City Police Department.
I'd like to thank you, first of all, for your service and all the years that you have provided, if you didn't know, I'm former law enforcement and retired sergeant, San Francisco Police, and just wanted to let you know you still have it, because you're standing there, and something was different about you, you're looking, you're multitasking, so.
I shut it down.
Exactly. I know the feeling. Ma'am, I'd like to say thank you so much for what the organization does and the support of CORA. I know in San Francisco, we had something Casa de las Madres, and it's been around for a long time, and I think that paved the way to bring about the awareness of domestic violence and the relationships, and it's a good thing. It's definitely a good thing, because there've been so many victims, and now it extends to not just females, but LGBTQ and men as well, and the awareness is very important. Thank you for what you continue to do, and recognizing those who have been gone above and beyond as well. Officer Lizana, 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 I can tell you're very humble, but the type of person who wants to do what is right and at the same time to protect and to serve, and the rest goes for Daily City PD. We are so happy to have you aboard for this city, and we just know that, and let, want to let you know, you are amongst the best and the finest. Thank you for what you do, and we need to have more presentations like this in the future. Thank you, Daily City PD, and thank you, CORA, and everyone involved. It's very much appreciated, and keep up the great work.
We brought some buyers, they are in English, Spanish, Tagalog, and in Mandarin. I'll leave them in the back in case you need one, pass it along. Like I said, it's a free confidential hotline number, they can call anonymous, whoever needs support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The next item on the agenda is, I have Mr. Armando Sanchez, the Executive Director, and this is, he's, he's going to give a presentation on HEART, Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. For those of you in the audience, I don't want to steal no thunder, if I'm starting to steal it, Armando, tell me. Daily City used to be a part of HEART, and we came back, and you're here to tell us what has happened since. I'll leave it there. So good evening, Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers and city manager. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. It's very nice to rejoin you. How does this work here? You know, oops. It's, I've had the incredible luck every time, I guess, recently that, no, no, not this, this is always expected of, but rather than, I always seem to follow a great person or a great occasion, you know, just like, ah, here I am again, following, okay, sure. Okay, so I just want to tell you very briefly about HEART, and then kind of jump into what we do in terms of the programs and accomplishments, and what's really important to me right now is the future of HEART. Go ahead. You know, HEART was established, HEART's mission is to meet the affordable housing needs of the community by raising funds and investing in affordable housing projects, but I'm, our board is going to be meeting in the near future, and I certainly hope it can expand substantially beyond this, because our JPA charter gives us the ability to do much, much more than simply raise money and put it into housing, and that's what I'm striving for as the Executive Director of HEART. As you may or may not know, we were founded in 2003 after the dot-com boom of the early 2000s. We were created as both a joint powers authority and as a 501(c)(3). The reason for that is that it allows us to bring in money from the pub, private sector, so that people who make donations, foundations, what else, corporations, anyone who contributes to us gets the tax write-off and the benefit of that, but also as a JPA so that we can access governmental money that would otherwise not be available to us as simply a joint power, a nonprofit. Go ahead. Our funding source then, as I mentioned, is private contributions and grants, but it also revenue from the public, from the public sector, which is largely the state and our member agency contributions. We right now have about $14 million in assets, and only about three right now is available from our housing trust fund to help affordable housing projects. Separately, we have, we raised $600,000, including from member cities, in order to maintain our operating budget. I'll talk really briefly about our three main programs and then jump into the future. Go ahead. Our main program is the developer loan program. This is where we make loans to developers to help them start affordable housing projects. We have one called a quick start, and that is for, to borrow for up to five years. This is a period when a project is more likely to fail and where no other funding sources are available, so it's really, really critical to come in at that early stage, so once the project is ready to move on to the next stage of construction, there are other entities that could come in and fund the project in the, on a permanent basis. We also have a semi-perm one, and that is, that goes a little bit further to allow projects to stabilize if they need our money for a longer period of time. To date, to date, since our inception, we've loaned about $19 million, and of that, 8.9, almost 9 million, has occurred in the last two years, so we've really accelerated, partially through our work and partially, it shows you how high construction costs have gone so that we have to lend out so much money. Of that, that has resulted in about almost 1,300 homes being constructed and a value of almost $570 million. Our projects, not all of them are there, there's a couple missing, but as you can see, our projects are across the county from the very bottom, East Palo Alto, all the way up to Daily City. I can't remember the, it's church, I can't remember the name of the project here, it slips my mind right now, it was way before my time, it was the very first project that HEART ever did. I want to just mention a couple of the brief projects to show you how we can be very effective. This is one of our recent ones, it's Palo Alto Housing Corporation. They, they're constructing a 67-unit senior housing project in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood. We did a 3.5 million land acquisition loan for them. From the time we heard about this to the date we funded it, it was three weeks. The developer had to move extremely quickly, quickly to keep, keep this project going and to meet all their closing obligations on the land. So our board was amazing, and in three weeks, like I said, from the time we learned about this loan, it went through a loan committee, and we funded the project immediately to keep this project on track. Another one we're working on right now is the Pacifica School District, to help them develop teacher housing, 45, it's employee housing, not just teachers, but we refer to it as teacher housing, and another 25 units that they haven't determined what it'll be. We've provided substantial technical assistance to this project beyond the funding that we've already done, and this is interesting, unlike other projects, there is no other public funding going into this project other than the land. It is going to be paid off through the rents from the units. And I think the last one I want to mention is 353 Main Street, which is, Main Street, which is also in Redwood City. This was another one that we had to move extremely fast so they could apply for their tax credit. It was another $3.5 million loan, this one's for construction. We're probably saving them over $200,000 by lending them, lending it to them for about two, three years, so that's a tremendous savings to them, and they really appreciated it, because it also gave them the power or the ability to move quickly into the tax credit stage when they applied for them. Go ahead. Let's go past this one one more. Right now, we just got another application for Light Tree in East Palo Alto, that's a very, $500,000 for rehabilitation of an existing project. They've indicated they'd like to come back for another 2.1 million for construction if we have the money available. We, I've had a few inquiries from developers in Daily City, but nothing has materialized, but we hope we can do one here soon, and you can be sure that if a project ever comes here, but we check with the city manager, your staff, to make sure that this is a project that the city and the city council supports. We never want to be ahead of any of you in terms of, you know, if a bad project that is, it's not right for the community, we're certainly not going to put money into it until we're sure that the city supports it. We have first-time homebuyer program that is very important to our middle, what is often referred to as our middle income, or our missing middle population, which is professional people who just simply make too much money to receive affordable housing assistance, but way too little to buy a home. Our loan provides, makes it possible for them to buy a home with only 5% down payment. Instead of having to save between, or close to $200,000 for a down payment, they can save as little as $60,000, $80,000 and be able to buy a home through our program. We recently had to increase the maximum qualifying income and the purchase price of a home, because it used to be 150 and 700 and something, but we simply, it was becoming ineffective. There were no homes at that price range, and people simply, you need a higher income in order to afford a home, so we, our board recently increased the limits. So now if you make 170,000, you're eligible, whether you're a person, a one-person household or five-person household, and the maximum price you can buy is 908, but even there, we found it difficult for them to compete, so we allowed people to bid 5% over the cap, an additional 45,000 if it helps them buy the home. Since we started this program in about 2008, we have assisted 88 families and loaned them about 5.85 million dollars. Here's where they bought the homes, as you can see, they tend to be clustered in neighborhoods that are still somewhat affordable in our county. This includes some of the areas in San Mateo County, East Palo Alto, and the northern county, fortunately. Oops, a little too far. Go back up, up a couple. Go backwards, a couple more. One more. Yeah, I just want to show you, this slide shows you the types of occupations as of people we've been able to help recently in the last two years. Eight teachers bought home with our programs, two, four in the medical profession, and four that are police officers, dispatchers, and city-county staff. So this is exactly the population that is suitable for our program. You know, a lot of times we get calls from low, very low-income people who want to buy a home, and we feel bad, but it's simply not designed to help people at that level, because the subsidies would be tremendously high. This is just a very simple tool, just to help people get into a program once they have stable jobs. Since the Daily City rejoined HEART, we've had eight workshops, and we have had residents from Daily City attend to all of them, so we've been able to provide first-time homebuyer education to 51 city residents and 24 people who live in the city, or, I'm sorry, who work in the city. We made three loans, two, two of the residents who currently lived here, and one bought here, I believe, one bought here, yeah, I think one bought here, and one bought in another city, and we had someone from San Francisco buy here in Daily City, so it's a blend. You get people who manage to buy in the city they live in, and sometimes they move to the city, and sometimes they move out depending on their circumstances. But we've made three loans so far to people from, with a relationship with Daily City. That's $292,000 in loans we've made to them. We also received a grant from the California Realtors Association, and we've been able to give some buyers a grant for closing costs of 5,000, and I can tell you that, that is tremendously helpful to them, because they've scraped everything they had to buy a home, and this grant gives them $5,000 in closing costs that they can probably turn around and save from their own money and use it to make repairs or improvements in their house right away. I'm happy to announce that we have a workshop coming here in Daily City. I've left a couple of flyers with staff, it's going to be this Thursday, June 6, here in this council chambers. People can register by going to HEART of San Mateo County and following the link to the first-time homebuyer program. I left a couple of flyers with staff, I'll leave some for you as well, that advertise the workshop, and we, I also left some flyers that explain how the program works in more detail, but sign-ups are available, and I'd really encourage people, even if you're not ready to buy, it's always a good opportunity to come and learn about the process. You learn how to put in a bid and what things you need to do to get yourself ready when you're ready to buy a home. Sometimes they don't turn into purchases right away, but at least over time, they have the tools to do that. One last one of our key programs I want to mention is the accessory dwelling unit, which is the granny units. We received the grant from the state to create four designs, and the idea behind this is that basically, we want to have these four designs that people can use and speed up the process, save money hiring an architect, and also get it through city approvals faster. What our hope is that, we want to work with the housing departments in each city and have them review the plans to make sure they conform with everything they want. If they're not, if there's improvements that are needed, we will make, work with our architect to get them to the point where they're ready, and then, once we make them available to the public, they will be able to go, they'll have to go through the planning process, approval process, like everyone would, but once they get through that, they'll be able to submit the plans to your building department that have been pre-reviewed, not pre-approved, just pre-reviewed, so that hopefully that speeds up the process, they say, okay, we know this one already, we know how, that it complies, and they'll be able to issue a permit much faster to save money on time as well. So we were hoping to make these plans applicable to the entire county, but with so many different regulations and codes, even though we live in the same, we're all in the same state, we had to forget it, for, targeted to four cities, and we thought the cities that were the most promising in terms of really promoting ADUs, that had, seemed to have the support of councils and staff, were, there were several, but we thought the top ones that would most benefit were Belmont, Redwood City, South San Francisco, and you here in Daily City. So we're specifically going to be designing them so that they comply with your building department's zoning, or building codes. Go ahead. So the last thing I want to mention is that I'm working with the board right now, we're going to have a retreat and talk about what HEART can do in the future to become a more effective member in helping cities construct housing. Right now, we have a contract with the city of East Palo Alto to help their staff with some housing policy work. We want to be available to your staff for simple questions, whether it would be like, how do you do something, or who can help us with this, all the way to providing more technical assistance for smaller cities who don't have a housing staff, really, so we want to be able to be, to do more for our city members. Once we complete our plans, if, we find that people like the plans and are using them, we want to, we'd like to do construction loans, so that, right now, if you want to build an ADU, you go to a bank, they say, well, refinance, or take an, take out a line of equity, they won't lend you money just to construct it. So what we'd like to do is perhaps create a loan product so that they can construct it, and once it's built, then they can go back to the bank and get a much better loan, because their property will be worth so much more. So, you know, we, I hope we can move in that direction. We're looking at an interesting model on affordable housing preservation, I think we've all heard the horror stories where somebody buys a big apartment building and kicks everybody out and raises the, puts paint on it and raises the rent. We're looking at a process where it may be possible to issue bonds in order to buy these units and to stabilize it, and then over time, make it more affordable. Not a tax credit model, which is much too expensive, but a different model that could take the project out of the public realm, private realm, put it in the public realm where it is better managed in the long run. I'll skip the SB2, that's a little technical, but one of the things that's coming up is Proposition 1 Veterans, as you recall, Affordable Housing Act, as you recall, the state recently passed, I think it was 300, I can't remember how many millions, they're making some money available specifically for housing trust funds like ours, and we, I hope to be applying for $5 billion to bring it into our county to help not just new developments, but potentially other types of housing projects, whether it be something for a shelter expansion like CORA, or homeless, purchasing a motel to help a homeless provider transition people into permanent housing. So we're going to try to have a really creative application that goes beyond the simple So we're going to try to have a really creative application that goes beyond the simple tax credit, affordable housing model, but we'll always do that since that's one of our core missions. So, I think that's it. Thank you again so much. I can't express to you how happy, everyone I talk to is that Daly City is a member of Hart again. You know, our ability to work here, there's great opportunities, and it's just very promising, and it's really a pleasure to be back here. Oh, one last thing. I remember it was really important for us to do outreach to the non-English speaking community, and we're trying. Bureaucracy is amazing. We started working with the Latino, what is it, Realtors to translate some of our materials, and they came back. We went to the bank, and they said, no, our attorneys have to review this because there's a lot of legal liability. So, you know, they, we kind of hit roadblocks because of legalese and liability, but we want to continue to do that. And we're trying to do all our information first, but that's not working as well because of this roadblock. So we're going to switch maybe to do the marketing a little bit more, but I want you to know, we are, we're trying, we're going to continue to work with them to make sure that the outreach to non-English speakers is there. So thank you again very much. If you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them now, or you can contact me later.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I'll open up to any of my council members if they want to make any, council members, if they want to make any comments or thoughts or questions for Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you because as the vice mayor spoke, he's on, he's our representative proudly, and that really pushes for the affordability, especially with the teachers and all the different things that are going on. And I was going to ask you, when you said the Prop 1, is that the same thing that Fiona Ma was working on about the veterans from the state treasurer as well?
No, I-
That money?
No, this was the, it was called Proposition 1, it was on last election.
Right, that was that one. But I mean, I know there's some money that, she's also helping veterans so well, so appreciate that as well, and thank you for looking out for Daly City. We really appreciate, because I know you're pushing hard for the languages. So thank you for being here. Thank you.
Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm just really happy to see that there's actually a workshop in Daly City. I know that, you know, you're trying to be part of our Daly City, be part of Hart again, but one of the key things is ensuring that there was accessibility to the residents in our community, and seeing this come into fruition, I'm happy to see that happen, and seeing that the program is helping residents and employees in our city. So, it's, it's, it's a complicated issue around affordable housing, but this is a key piece that, that helps the community, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Dr. Rodd, anything?
I just want to echo my fellow council members in terms of providing services and assistance for providing some sort of affordable housing for our, for our communities, knowing that, you know, we're not, oh, housing crisis. I think any type of services or anything that can provide community to stay in, people that have grown up here to stay intact and be, and live where they grew up is, is a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodd. Mr. Sanchez, it's good to be back.
Yeah.
I remember last year when I was chosen to become, to be a representative for Daly City on your board. Believe me, it didn't stop there because before I got there, I was at home doing some calculations, and I was saying to myself, well, if you come, if the maximum was 150,000, you can only afford a house of this much. And that really perplexed me. And I am so happy that the board got together based upon information, and they raised the limits to 906,000 and the income of 170. That's very progressive thinking. I think I read something, was it, 117,000 is the minimum income needed to buy a home? That's considered low income now. Wow. And San Jose is even worse. But it's tough, and the, the population and the folks trying to start a family, the all-American dream is to own your own place, and it's very tough, but this gives them a mechanism to get started. So, thank you so much for what you do. I'd like to let everyone know I've been a part, and I like your ideas, and that's why we keep you. But, Mr. Sanchez, thank you so much, and we look, we look forward to your workshop coming June 6th. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Manalo.
Second.
Second by Councilmember De Giovanni. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have passed. Next item is the approval of the agenda. The motion?
Moved.
Motion by Councilmember Manalo.
Second.
Second by Dr. Rodd. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, everybody said aye. Okay, thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, or if anybody wants to pull anything, please advise.
So moved to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Manalo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember De Giovanni. All those in favor in approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent calendar has been adopted, approved. All right, next we move on to item number six, which is the general plan amendment, GPA 1-19-13-827, zone change. Zebra Charles, -1-19-13828, use permit, UPR-1-19-13830. And Mr. Palin, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Our country works.
Good evening.
And next item before you this evening is the Habitat for Humanity Geneva Townhomes, located at 3001 Geneva Avenue. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment for residential, from residential medium-low density to residential medium-density, and rezoning from unzoned to R3 multiple-family residential, in order to allow the construction of six townhouse-style units. Additionally, the applicant is requesting an airspace subdivision for six condominium units, and design review approval for the overall building. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Geneva Avenue and Schwerin Street. This is a view from the intersection of Geneva Avenue and Schwerin Street, looking northeast. The, this is a, the existing homes, which are immediately to the east of the subject And this is a view of the market that is located to the north of the subject site or behind the proposed building. The proposed 11,017-square-foot building will contain six townhouse-style units. Each unit will contain three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms, and a one-car garage with approximately 1,830 square feet of living space. The building itself will be three stories and set back one foot from the Geneva Avenue property line, following the predominant setback for that neighborhood. This is a perspective view from Geneva Avenue, looking northeast. Here you see the, here you see the Geneva Avenue and Schwerin Street elevations. The project features high-quality materials such as lapped siding with extensive trim around the windows, between floors, and at building corners. Large second-floor windows would be double-hung and accentuated with corbels and trellis structures. All garage doors would be recessed for de-accentuation and embellished visually also through the use of corbels and overhead trellises at the sidewalk level. Staff has completed an initial study and has determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Adoption of a negative declaration is therefore an appropriate level of review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff finds that the project is compatible with the proposed amended general plan and the regulations of the multiple-family residential district. The design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the city council approve the general plan amendment, zone change, use permit, major subdivision, and design review based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palin. Do I have any questions from any of my council members? We'll, we'll start with Dr. Rodd this time.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll work backwards. Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you very much. I noticed that, are any of the plans, and, for instance, I see that, is there any street widening that's happening with the project? I see the proposal of, just looking around the area, I see the proposal of trees. Is that, is that part of their project as well?
Correct, yes. Then they, they've been working with Public Works to follow the program for that, for that neighborhood, to make upgrades that's going to include street plantings.
And then, are they also providing a bulbout, or is that already there? Maybe it's at the corner.
Yeah, right at the corner.
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just looking at, this is the first time I'm seeing the project, so I'm looking at all of the, well, for me, you know, I think it's important that it's 100% affordable housing. So, I'm a proponent that, you know, in this stage and age of the crisis measured by my colleagues, we need more affordable housing. Habitat for Humanity has provided projects in Daly City, and they've been a great partner. So seeing something of this size as well, every unit counts. And for me, it's now looking at kind of the design of, of the project, and I'm noticing that, you know, it's a thoughtful project, and that's why I asked, they, they provided trees along that area. We've seen the area within Geneva, and, you know, it's very urbanized, and seeing that they proposed trees, and also, is that right, Michael, that they're providing a bulbout as well?
Bulbout's existing.
Oh, it's existing. Okay, so it's existing. Well, that's on Daly City. Thank you. But that's, that's, and I guess a question, I know this is for the design, is Habitat for Humanity here?
Yes, yes.
Just around the programming of, do they already know what the programming is and the depth of affordability?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll have a few remarks later, but to answer your question, the programming, Habitat tries to target what we refer to as the missing middle, 60 to 80% of AMI.
The president?
A lot of it.
60.
A lot of that depends on where the project ends up. We also, we, we, part of our funding stack comes from public funds, as well as private donations and internal capital, and so, the program is really, the affordability level is reflective of how successful we are in raising funding for the project, particularly public funding for the project. So, those are targets. And, you know, hopefully, the project will average around 80% AMI, but we can certainly come back at a later date and, and share that with you, where we end up.
Thank you. So your target is about 60 to 80%, 60 to 80%, and then, you know, you need to still raise funding for the project, as you mentioned.
Correct.
And usually, the average is 80% AMI.
Correct.
Okay. So, how much have you raised for the project?
You know, I don't have, I didn't bring those numbers with me. The, I believe the city, I'm relatively new to Habitat, I believe the city assisted in the, in the purchase of the property through a loan. And we've had one other grant, and we'll be applying another grant. We'll be applying for Prop 1 money, we'll be applying for some community development block grant money as well. And we typically apply to cities if they have inclusionary fees that are available, we would apply for those as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And so, given that, is there a threshold that, or whatnot, around affordability? I know the target is 60 to 80, but does it, with this project, since it's their project, if it exceeds higher than a certain threshold, is, I mean, that's not our, in our jurisdiction, I'm just wondering. It doesn't ever, you don't, I mean, your goal is, of course, to have affordable housing for the community. I know you're mission-driven.
Correct.
I'm just wondering, would we get an update from, from your organization to find out where you're at as you proceed with your fundraising efforts?
Oh, absolutely, and we'll, I mean, we'll be working with the city.
Okay.
We have been working with the city already, and we will continue to work with the city, with the housing group. So, yeah, it's all, it's all out on the table. A lot of the, a lot of the funding that we receive has affordability requirements built into it. So, the more public funding we get, the more, the more that, the more that the AMI is controlled. Typically, that's an 80%. That's why we typically end up at about 80% AMI. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. My name's Peter Don, I'm the Vice President of Real Estate for Habitat for Humanity, Greater San Francisco.
Oh, great. Very nice to meet you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think, good. Councilmember De Giovanni.
I just have a quick question. You probably don't even need to answer it. I was looking over here, and I did see the garages, because I know that we, we had received some letters, people concerned about the parking, but I see that you do provide two garages per?
Yeah, the project, every house has a garage-
Wow.
...that fits one car.
That's good.
So it's one, it's one car per unit, and then there are, or one car per home, and there are four street parking spaces around the, around the curb.
Oh, that's great, because I know that you did a really good job on the, the one that we currently have, that large one with the solar on top.
Right.
That was excellent, and that people maintained and kept it aesthetically clean, and it was great. And that addresses our lower income, especially in the Bay Shore, in that area. So it could use a boost up, so-
Thank you.
...which is great. Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. Habitat for Humanity's been great.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. I have a few questions. According, I see by the plans, would you kindly confirm that these are all going to be three bedrooms, one bathroom?
I believe they were-
H2.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the plans.
Each unit will be three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms.
One and, oh, I see the half. Okay, got it. And, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, and I see a density bonus has been requested, which includes one parking spot for 1,800 square feet, with the exception of the corner three-story is 1,827. So, per our planning code, 1,800 square feet is one parking spot defined, and that's enough?
No, the applicant is asking for a parking concession based on the fact that they are providing low-income housing, and that has been reviewed by the planning commission, and they recommended approving the parking concession.
I didn't see any comments from our planning commission. Did anybody not have any comments? I didn't see that in the staff report for tonight.
The planning commission, when they reviewed this, was, did not have any comments, they were in support of the project as proposed.
Okay. So I got three bedrooms for each unit, that's a total of 18 bedrooms, and six divided by two, nine bathrooms. Any estimation as to, I'm sure there'd probably be no occupancy limits in each one of these homes. In other words, we can't restrict a homeowner from saying, you got three bedrooms, and the most you can have living here is six.
Not beyond what is defined in the California Residential Building Code. It's not something that the planning zoning ordinance for the city of Daly City speaks to, but the building code.
Sure.
Does.
Okay, thank you for that. See, my concern is, with so many bedrooms and the higher density, that, don't get me wrong, we need affordable housing, and humanity has really done a lot for us over the years, but I'm also concerned about the neighborhood. If I look at your plans, there are some nearby homes right next to it. If I'm not mistaken, those homes are probably three bedrooms, one bath, but they have tandem parking, which holds two cars. Did anybody ever look at any of those homes there to see if they had tandem parking? Because here, we're looking at almost, not exactly doubling the square feet, but 1,800 square feet, and to reduce it, to request a density bonus because it's low income, and to say, we can only give you one, we'll give you one parking spot, it really doesn't sit well with me. So, I mean, any additional information from the homes next door or in the neighborhood as to how many parking spots they hold?
I can't, I can't answer to whether or not they have a tandem garage or not. The city of Daly City zoning ordinance does allow, and a lot of, a lot of homeowners have done this, it does allow, even if the, even if the home requires per its, per its habitable square footage, two parking spaces, we, per the city council's direction, we allow them to use the rear half of the tandem two-car garage as living space in order to prevent them from expanding the envelope of the house further. So in a lot of cases where you have an original tandem two-car garage, the rear half of that tandem garage is converted to living space and allowable per our zoning ordinance.
Thank you, thank you for that. That's good to know, but at the same time, I also know for a fact that folks don't use their garage, and subsequently park in the front or across the street and increase the congestion. It's not to say that the owners of these units will, I mean, we can't enforce forcing someone to use their garage, which I'm just thinking of the congestion that's going to come by later by, and if we're only giving one parking spot, I have a concern with that. I heard that there's going to be four street parking in the front, but if it's street parking, that's public right-of-way, anybody can park there. So that's basically not a, it's not a concession, in the sense that four will be available, but that's open to anyone. Thank you for that. All right, do any other comments?
So in essence, you only get one, is that correct, Vice Mayor, one parking spot per unit?
One parking spot for three bedrooms, one and a half baths, 1,800 square feet. It's almost, that's slightly smaller than my house. And I got four parking spots. Okay, any other comments?
I have one other question.
Yes.
So Habitat for Humanity, this project is for ownership or rental?
This will be for ownership, first-time homebuyers.
First time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Palin. Habitat for Humanity, thank you so much for being here. At this particular time, I would like to open, open this to the public, and I don't have any cards on this particular item, so seeing, oh, do, no, it's not too late, ma'am.
I'm here to speak for Eastmore, but now that I've heard his president.
I'm sorry?
I'm here to speak on Eastmore, but I'd like to.
Eastmore?
Yeah, that's number eight.
Okay, well.
But I'd like to just make a comment to your comment, if I can.
Well, yes.
Can I do another card, then?
Yes, ma'am, just for the record's sake, please.
My name is Marion Seki, and I live on 55 Zeta Manor, and I'd like to follow up on your comment, in that it's one and a half bathrooms, three bedrooms, one parking space, and we've already brought up parking is a premium in every neighborhood in every city. And I'd like to know what this council and what Habitat can do if you raise this question, is that adequate parking? What's the follow-up on that? Do we demand for you to review the plans to increase parking, or do we just let it sit and let them get away with one parking space for three bedrooms and one and a half baths? That's my question to this council. Where do we go from your comment? Do we expand and ask for more parking, or do we let this go through? Or not me, but you all.
It's our decision.
Okay.
Does somebody have an answer? Do we have more meetings, or does that, as this plan said, no, no one has any comments from the planning community, everybody accepts this, then you bring up not enough parking spaces, so I'm bringing it up too. I have a concern, because that's coming up on mine on Eastmore. So is there, is that accepting, or do we go on with it?
Basically, we're taking comments at this time, and I thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, Mr. Lockhausen.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, the state's density bonus law is specifically set up to provide for concessions for developers of affordable housing developments such as this. If this project was to provide all of the code-required number of parking spaces, the number of units would be at least cut in half.
Yeah.
So it'd be looking at at least half the number of units. There's a very specific purpose in the laws that the state of California set up to allow for projects like this to advance forward with, without meeting all of the regulations that the city has in place, and so that's the purpose of that law.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhausen. Any other further comments from the public? You got one more? Okay, this is item number six, folks. If anyone else would like to speak to item number six, please give us a card. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a Graciela, and, is it Ms. Graciela?
Yes.
Yes, and you'd like to speak on this item, number six?
Yes.
Okay, number six, and I'll need your last name, ma'am.
Ramirez.
R.A. Oh, Ramirez, thank you. Oh, sure, you have two minutes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Graciela Ramirez, and I come in about the planning for Geneva and Shering. Sorry, but my English is not too good, but I tried. And the problem, I live in McDonald Avenue, between Shering. Then I see the problem, right now, we don't have any more parking. Too many people is coming to live there. I see many people I don't see before, and it's right what you say about people leave their parking in the house, and then bring the cars on the street. So my neighbors, the same problem, because I went to talk with them about this letter I received, and then they say that, they say the same problem about parking. So that's why I'm not agreeing for this project, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, you gave me two cards, right? All right, I have two more cards here, but they're not on this, oh, and number six, got it. Ms. Marion Seki, you just spoke. Okay. Oh, put my glasses on. Ms. Sally, Sally?
Yes.
And your last name, Sally?
Yip.
Oh, Ms. Yip, okay, and item number six, yes?
Yeah, actually, I also live in Geneva and Swarn, just show it on your map here. So I bought this house three years before, I see a big change around the area, especially the school next to us. When I bought it, it didn't have, when I bought it, I didn't know the school had totally remodeled, so it become, have lots of issue with different environmental issue, they changed all the layout, and then we now have some kind of leaking issue from the school because the setup for the development is not as good as I think. I have no way to say any voice, because by the time they have this kind of meeting, I wasn't the owner yet, but now I am, so I think it's more important for me to get involved, to know more and say more what I can feel like. Recently, with this area, there's a lot of changing on Geneva, there's a dancing school, they open Monday and Thursday and weekend, they dance a lot, have a lot of noise, all the students, they park, they park on their Swarn, because on the outside, it's pretty much as a long curve, people can park pretty easy. At the same time, I do see a lot of VA parking right now, people park it as living, so it's become like more packed. Also, at the same time, is there's a lot of crimes activity, all the windows get broken, always people ask, can I see your camera and see, you see the evidence, accidents, things like that. So for us, I think it is already not too safe, and we've put more new cars, people park on this side, it will be the possible chance, because on McDonald's side, there's not much parking, as the lady say. But more on Geneva, and also on Swarn, there's lots of parking areas possible, and the closer area, they will come to park, and with more traffic, that's what I concern.
Thank you, Ms. Yip.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any other cards at this time. I would request a motion to close the public hearing on item number six.
Motion to close?
You have it first?
Second.
Second. All right. Before we adopt the resolution, is this okay, if I'm following protocol, Madam City Attorney, I get final comments from my colleagues before we decide to adopt the resolution? Okay, so if my colleagues have any other further questions, either for staff or thoughts that they may have, you're more than welcome to, please tell us at this time. Councilmember Dejio?
Because I went first last night.
Dr. Rod Dastmoghwal. Yeah. I think housing is a hardcore need here in the Bay Area, especially folks that are trying to establish families. I'm an example of a, of a case of starting own family, trying to, you know, establish roots here. And I understand that parking is an issue, and land is an issue in Daly City, unless we start making a parking garage somewhere, I don't think anything will be resolved. And I'm not saying like a parking garage will be the right way, but knowing that the streets is a public right-of-way, and there's a need for parking, I think we need to come up with a creative solution of understanding how to go about parking, and I know that we're going to be having future discussions about that. So it's not going to be left unaddressed, there will be future discussions on this. And not everybody's going to be happy with this, you know, but one thing about being in a community is being able to live with each other and being able to discussion and have dialogue, so I'm all supportive of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Rod. Councilmember Dejio Vani.
Yeah, I think that with our fellow, my fellow colleague, that to be able to get a low income, what is considered low income, 100% affordable housing, you don't get that, and it's only Habitat for Humanity's usually, and probably a couple of the projects that we've had have been 100%, and it is the law that they are given that so that they give the incentive, so that no one wants to do that, they want to sell the million-dollar homes, because it's not an incentive, because they're going to make the money off the million dollars. This is a project that, it's not a million dollars that somebody's really going to make, it's a project that really the charity, if people that are familiar with Habitat for Humanity, that they raise the funds to do this in communities that are underserved, and we know our Bay Shore is underserved, and we're trying to make sure that they get unnoticed and have roofs over their head, because some of them right now are really looking at, I know some people that, that have children, and they might have to move out of the area, and I know with the, with the school, things got complicated, and the school was in a, in a need in that area, and hopefully things will settle down. And we are going to be addressing parking in the city. It's not going to be an easy issue. We are going to have a parking summit, and we actually have our city manager and other people working on some other things, and we're not sure what's going to come up, but people will participate. If you, you don't think we understand it, we understand it. We also understand that, that we do have families that go to those schools, and they don't, they don't have, they don't have a roof, they have a housing insecurity, that the rent's going to go up $1,000, which it did for one family, and they had to move out. So with that, we have to think about that, and we will be addressing everyone's issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejio Vani. Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. There, there is a need for housing, and I hear the people that are talking about access to more parking, right? This is not only in your neighborhood, it's in, you know, we're a dense city, and so, as mentioned by my colleagues, we are going to try to see if there are solutions together, and down this, the line in the summer, we will have, as mentioned, a housing, I mean, a parking summit, where we'd love to hear people's ideas as well, to try to solve for something that is not only in the neighborhood in the Bay Shore, but it's in other areas as well. It's a, it is rare to find a 100% affordable housing project, and for me, I think one concern I'd like to bring up, and hopefully can work with Habitat for Humanity, is if there could be a priority or preference for Daly City residents, because this is a ownership, ownership opportunity.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that, that, you know, we're hearing that, you know, there's people that are growing up in the city of Daly City, and they can't afford to stay in the communities that they've been growing up in, and if they're being priced out because of, you know, you know, rents are going higher, or they can't afford, you know, buying their own homes, this is an opportunity right here where families and growing families are able to remain in their home, in their city that they grew up in. So for me, I'd like to see if there was a way to work with Habitat for Humanity in partnership to have a preference or prioritize Daly City residents. But that's, that's, you know, what my request. But that's, you know, what my request is, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Mr. Longhausen, you had made mention that because of the density bonus and it enables this project, what if, if it wasn't three stories, it was two stories, could that still work?
Well, that would significantly impact the usability of the unit.
That's what I thought, okay. And for a question for the city attorney, is this redevelopment land?
This is our former redevelopment parcel.
All right, and one more question. We received a letter. Would this project, if we had requested an EIR, could that be done?
There would have to be significant environmental impacts that were identified in the initial study that was prepared by the Planning Division. And the Planning Division found no significant impacts.
Thank you. To my colleagues and the public, you know, this is a very tough call for me personally because I tried to see both sides of the coin here. And you've heard it and I've seen it, Daly City has a parking problem. But we are going to address that parking problem. And the main idea, the purpose here, number one, is a prior redevelopment land. That means redevelopment means it has to have housing. True, you might say, well, it doesn't have to be that many units. But at the same time, the affordability is very, very important. For Daly City to give preference to only those living in Daly City, and I heard ownership per se, if I'm not mistaken, for real estate law, you cannot prevent anyone from purchasing a home and you cannot limit to only one certain group or residence, is that correct? Real estate. Habitat for Humanity, and if this is going to be affordable, you will determine affordability based upon those who apply and see if they meet the criteria, whether you're going to do it by lottery. But if someone from San Francisco comes in and say wins and they meet the criteria for AMI, do they get preference to buy the home over a Daly City resident who wants to buy a home?
We need to meet the fair housing laws.
That's what I thought. And the fair housing laws dictate that you cannot discriminate based upon race, color, creed, sex, origin, and...
That's correct. I mean, we'll work with, we'll work with the city's housing group, Betsy Zobel, and on an affordable housing agreement and our program. And so we will, we will work with the city on, we have a defined program. And we work with cities and we try to modify it to the extent that we can and still stay within our mission to meet the needs of the city. We won't be advertising this project everywhere. Our advertising will be focused here. And so, you know, it'll be unlikely that we'll see people applying from other parts of the Bay Area. Maybe if they work here and they've heard about the project, they might apply. If they live here, they would certainly, I would certainly expect them to apply. So, you know, we're not advertising this project in San Francisco. We're not advertising it in San Mateo. We're advertising it in Daly City and in this immediate area. So that helps, sort of narrows the applications to the local market.
That's a good answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would, I do have a few other comments when it's appropriate.
Oh, well, we're about to decide and do a roll call on this resolution. So if you want to make your final comment, please do.
Just, I'll make one comment on the parking. I think a lot's been said about it and I certainly hear the concerns of the neighborhood. You know, our mission is to provide affordable housing and we do that through applications of things like the state density bonus law, et cetera, as it has been explained. One difference on this project versus the surrounding area is this is a condominium and there will be CCNRs. And we will have a requirement in our CCNRs that the garages must be maintained so that they're available to park cars in them.
Oh, thank you.
So there will be six parking spaces inside this building and the HOA management will be maintaining that. And we have a condition here that the city will be reviewing our conditions of approval and so they'll be able to verify that. But I guess turning to a little business, there are three conditions of approval that I have a little bit of concern over in maintaining the viability of the project. We've worked with staff a little bit on it, but I think there's still some lack of clarity, I guess. Conditions 21 and 22 refer to whether the project will comply with Chapter 11B or Chapter 11A of California Building Code. And those have to do with the accessibility of the units within the building. This project has been designed to meet Chapter 11A. The confusion that I see in these conditions is that Condition 21 reads, "Building design shall conform with accessibility requirement per 11B when public funding is used to construct the building." We are going to be using public funding. But we understand this code to read that that the building has to comply with 11B if it's considered public housing, not public funding. And there's a big difference there. And so rather than getting into the nuance of how the code is written, I would suggest that these two conditions be struck because we are required to abide by the California Building Code anyway. So we're going to go out, we're going to get our funding and the project is what it is and we will have to meet the code that applies to us. These two conditions, I think, just confuse the matter. And if someone were to interpret 21 to say that if we go get a community development block grant, which is HUD money, and, well, maybe that's not a good example. If we go get state money, which we will, we could be required to comply with 11B, in which case we'll lose a unit in this building because we can't meet 11B in the configuration. We meet 11A, which is an, which is a adaptability requirement. So my request is that these two conditions be dropped and that we simply be, that we simply conform to the California Building Code. The other, the other concern I have is Condition number 36, which states that the project's electrical transformer shall not be installed within the public right of way. We've consulted with our PG&E experts and we do not have a place within our project site to place a transformer outside of the public right of way. Typically, transformers get placed in underground vaults in the sidewalk. And so it's just a smooth, flat surface, walk across it, drive across it, they're traffic rated. It's typical, typical practice most everywhere. So if we're required to, if we find that we have to place a transformer within the private property, we're going to lose a unit. That will make the project infeasible. So what I would request is that this condition be very simply modified to state that the project's electrical transformer should not be installed within the public right of way unless there is no other option and at which, and at which point that transformer will be installed in an underground vault. So other than that, thank you very much for your consideration. And staff's been wonderful to work with, very responsive. And we're very, very much looking forward to getting some building plans into the building department and getting a permit and breaking ground hopefully in September of this year.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask staff.
Please.
Has this information been brought, made, made available to staff for planning? And if so, has there been any decision? Or is this the first that staff is hearing about this today? And if so, I'm wondering why it's coming before the council?
So with regard to the, the condition regarding the transformers, they have been working with planning and engineering staff about modifying that condition and/or eliminating their requirements. So my understanding was that there was...
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may. Yeah, typically, in terms of these private development projects, staff has been fairly consistent in regards to the requirement that if a transformer is for the private development and for private use, that it be located on private property. We've been fairly consistent with other projects as well. And so the issue is in terms of taking up public space for private use, whether it's above ground or underground. The city's public right of way is already very congested in regards to all the different utilities that we have. And so the requirement for private infrastructure that only supports the private development, that that be accommodated on private property. We have been working with the developer in regards to the requirement for utility undergrounding. And we did work something out there in regards to the practical ability to underground. And we've gotten, and we've seen some information from PG&E. And so we have worked with the applicant in terms of not requiring the undergrounding within the property that we typically would for subdivisions. But the transformer was something that we wanted to remain consistent on.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
May I respond to the other?
11A and 11B?
Yeah, that's unfortunately a building code issue. So I wasn't, I wasn't made aware of that before this evening, that there was an issue with that. And that would be something that would need to be addressed by our building official.
So please, correct me if I'm wrong. You're asking council to adopt a resolution that state it's going to be six units, which consists of three bedrooms, one and a half baths each one. And I also hear this evening that it may lose a unit because of discrepancy on where we're going to place the power unit. And then we have to get more information on the conditions pertaining to 11A and 11B, which is a building code issue, to which, please help me. What are we looking for council tonight to do? Oh, Ms. Mothershead, please.
I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Public Works Department and the condition regarding the transformer, but I will speak on behalf of the Building Division. The code is the code, that is the truth. So oftentimes, the conditions of approval also sort of act as comments on the plans that were submitted. At the end of the day, they have to comply with the building code. And so I think what we could take it to mean is that there's a point of clarification and discussion that needs to happen through the plan review process. And so I think it may be okay to take those conditions out, but I would remind the applicant that they are sort of on notice, that there is the need to clarify and make a distinction between publicly funded and not. So I think in that case, that's fine. But I'm going to defer to the Public Works Department on their condition of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Mothershead. Madam City Attorney?
If I, if I may, this is more of a general, rather than strike out the building code, conditions. I do have a language suggestion which might be in a broader nature without striking it out. And I could read it through the chair if you'd like, just so that you can hear. Okay. So for Conditions 21 and 22, I would suggest to say, "Building design shall conform to applicable building codes for accessibility." So if, in fact, that there are codes that are applicable to a particular comment, this would bound them to say they shall conform to that, rather than just take it out completely. I would suggest to have some express language that they would fire, they would comply with the applicable building codes for accessibility. And that would be a broad, that would be broad enough.
So could this be placed as a condition?
Yes. Rather than strike 21 and 22.
11A.
I'm sorry, 21 and 20. The suggestion is to strike 21 and 22. Through the, just through the chair, I would suggest that we strike that and include the general language about the building code.
Well, that was through the chair.
Yes, it's through the chair.
All right. Okay. Is there any further comments by my colleagues at this time before we move on? Hearing none?
One quick question. Is that including the 36 that he mentioned? Oh, 36 goes to, is applicable to Mr. Chu, right? Okay.
Well, if we do approve this and if it doesn't work out and we end up losing a unit, then I guess the developer will decide whether it's feasible to continue with the project or just, just continue it. That's my thought. Oh, yes, sir.
If I, if I may. We would... We submitted a letter to staff on May 7th. And it references some of our concerns with the conditions. Staff has worked with us and resolved all of them except for the ones that I've mentioned this evening. In that letter, we stated that, that at that time is listed as Condition number 41. I think it's 36 now. But we stated that Habitat objects to this condition about restricting placement of the transformers in the right of way. While the intent of the project is to serve the property from the existing facility to the rear, we need to preserve the option of placing a subsurface transformer in a vault at the front of the project in the sidewalk area of the public right of way, requiring a transformer to be installed on private property if deemed necessary by PG&E could reduce the number of units in the project. So that was in the letter. I would say that this is a PG&E transformer, if it, if it needs to be provided. And so it's not a private transformer. It belongs to PG&E and it can serve other facilities beyond just our project. So to me, that defines it as a public facility. And I would also submit that under the density bonus law, we're entitled to up to three concessions. And so we would add that this be considered as an additional concession for our application, that if necessary, that the transformer be allowed to be placed in the public right of way. It's our intent not to lose a unit on this project. That may result in the loss of all six units. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We, we can, again, we can go on back and forth, back and forth, all night. But we're going to have to make a decision on this project. And what comes down, down the road, whether it has to come back before council to include any modification thereof, then it shall happen. But we need to, I'd rather make a decision on this rather than to hold this up because you're intending on doing this in September. But that would be incumbent upon you and to work with staff. to work with staff, and let's see if we can come up with some sort of an agreement. Okay, are there any other comments?
That would be put in the conditions, Vice Mayor.
We have the conditions. I think it was item number twenty-two you made mention in twenty...
Twenty-one, sorry.
Through the chair, twenty-one and twenty-two, I would suggest to add the language about the "Building design shall conform to applicable building codes for accessibility."
Okay. And as for the other items, that will come, they will stand as-is...
That's my understanding.
Based upon what happens later on through the process. But we do have the concerns and comments made by the developer for the record.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Deidre Giovanni.
No, I just want to make sure that it's very clear. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for clarifying.
All right. I've just, I've just scrolled down, way down to the bottom of this document, so... So, the next, we're gonna have to, number six. All right, so, I'll accept a res, resolution, adopt a resolution. This is to adopt, and it will be by roll call.
Right, so, a motion on the floor, through the chair, with the amendment to the conditions is on the floor for a motion.
Okay, roll call, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Wait a second.
A second.
That's through the chair.
Oh, do we still have to make the motion?
Yes, you have to make them.
Okay, okay. So, we have a first by Deidre Giovanni, and second by Councilmember Manalo. Roll call, please.
I didn't say anything, but...
Ms. Deidre Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
And then, we do have an ordinance for the, a motion for the city attorney to read by title only.
I would entertain a motion for the city attorney to read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council. This is an ordinance of the City of Daly City, amending Daly City zoning map, rezoning existing point one-four acre site located at three zero zero one Geneva Avenue from unzoned to multifamily R3.
And I'll entertain a council member to introduce the ordinance. Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. At this point, recommend to introduce the ordinance of the general plan amendment to GPA dash one dash one-nine dash one-three-eight-two-seven, zone change ZZ dash one dash one-nine dash one-three-eight-two-eight, use permit UPR dash one dash one-nine dash one-three-eight-three-zero, major subdivision sub dash one dash one-nine one-three-eight-three-two, and design review DR dash one dash one-nine one-three-eight-three-three for the construction of six town homes at three thousand one Geneva Avenue.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. All right, moving on to the next item, item number seven, the general plan amendment, GPA dash three dash one-nine dash one-three-nine-one-one, and design review DR dash six dash one-eight dash one-three-five-three-zero, construction of a, of four single-family homes at seven-one-seven Templeton Avenue. And this is item number seven. Mr. Palin.
Thank you. The next item before you this evening is Templeton Homes, located at seven-one-seven Templeton Avenue. In nineteen ninety-four, a number of properties in the city were rezoned. The subject property was rezoned by the City of Daly City from multiple family to single-family. Yet, the general plan designation of open space was not updated at the same time. The applicant and the city are requesting a general plan amendment from open space preservation to residential low density in order to allow the construction of four single-family homes. Since the parcels are already zoned single-family, no rezoning is required. The subject property is located on the south side of Templeton Avenue. This slide shows an aerial photo. The, the grassy area is the project site. Another site photo, this is taken from Templeton Avenue, looking at, at the south side of the street where the, the proposed houses would be developed. Same location, but from a different angle. And this is existing development on the south side of the street, just to the west of the subject site. These are properties on the north side of Templeton Avenue. The four lots range in size from approximately thirty, three thousand two hundred square feet to four thousand five hundred square feet. Each home will be set back a minimum of eleven feet from the front, meeting the predominant setback requirement, and five feet from the left-side property lines. The front yards will include a two-car-wide driveway to access the two-car side-by-side garage, and a three-foot pedestrian, pedestrian access to the front entry. The remainder of the front yard area will be landscaped. The first floor contains an entry foyer, a bedroom with bathroom, and a two-car side-by-side The second floors contain a living room, a powder room, kitchen and dining areas. The third floor consists of a master bedroom with in-suite bathroom, two additional bedrooms, and a bathroom. The proposed homes provide a recess at the third floor of the building's front elevation, provide a recess garage door and pedestrian entrance, and the architectural materials and details are replicated from the front facade onto the visible sidewalls of the building. The homes provide a combination of stucco and horizontal wood siding altering between floors, which serves to, serves to visually distinguish the pedestrian and main living levels while de-emphasizing the third floor. Neighbors on the north side of Templeton Avenue have expressed concerns regarding the development, including reduced off-street parking, where parking is already limited, limited visibility for cars backing out of steep driveways onto a curved and sloped street, potential structural impacts to homes resulting from heavy equipment used during construction and grading, and increased traffic on Templeton once the homes are occupied. Staff has completed an initial study and has determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Adoption of a negative declaration is therefore an appropriate level of review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the general pan and, plan and zoning regulations of the single-family residential district, and that the design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the city council approve the general plan amendment, design review, negative, and negative declaration, based on the findings and conditions outlined, outlined in the staff report. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palin. Any questions for Mr. Palin, staff, by any one of my colleagues? Anyone? All right, I'd like to open it up to, need a motion to open up to public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
The first, second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first, second. All right. I have one card on this matter, and it's a Gino Castoro. Mr. Castoro?
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, yeah, thank you. So, I've lived up there for forty years, on the north side. You didn't really get a very good picture of the houses across the street, and particularly the steepness of the street. But that hill, that little piece of land there is a little historical significance in that there's a set of stone steps that go up the hillside, all the way up. It's from a subdivision, a cracker subdivision, probably a hundred years ago. And it was a common area that went up, and it's beautifully, there's some seating in the middle, and steps that went up to the top. It's all overgrown now, but to say that it's not an impact to the environment doesn't really make a lot of sense. But aside from that, the street is very steep in that, and it's curving in that area. And my main concern, when I looked at the drawings, was that the drawings, the driveways were going to be nineteen percent slope, and the, the, um, street itself is sixteen, so they're considerably steeper than the road itself, if you've ever been up there. And I think you ought to take a look, ride up there if you haven't. So, to characterize those driveways as being parking spaces doesn't make a lot of sense, really. I mean, I get a ticket on the street if I don't curb my wheels, and, and a driveway like that, there's really nothing to curb your wheels against. So, the city has deferred it to the Traffic Division, which was going to look at, and I spoke to them as well, and they're looking at making the developer show how they can get into this drive, into this garage, you know, up a, from a steep street up and then in that angle. So, they told them they had to provide vertical curves, which may or may not be possible. So, I, I guess the thing is, it needs to go, they must, they'd have to go much lower to make it practical at all. Now, my houses, all the houses there are fifteen hundred square feet, you know, and I just heard that four thousand, I didn't even realize how big they were across the street. So, I guess we're concerned also about, and I sent the council some pictures of the street, when we've been neglected over the years, and it's, the curbs are, yeah, the curbs are crumbling, you know, you can't even curb your wheels in some places, because you'll, they'll roll right over if you don't have a good parking brake. So, we're concerned about the number of trucks that would have to go up there, and if you have to build this, you, we would encourage you to let, make the trucks go down the street, not go up Templeton. We, we need a lot of street improvements up there as it is, because it's just been neglected over the years. There's a concrete portion of Templeton, about a hundred yards long, the beginning of the curve that goes on the...
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to finish up, please. Your two minutes is up, please.
Well, I'm saying then, in conclusion, that we need a lot of street improvements on that street, and that's a really beautiful piece of hillside that you're letting get away from you.
Thank you so much. That's the last card I have for item number seven. I'll entertain a motion to close the public...
Oh, they have one here.
Oh, one more?
I have to fill out a card.
I'd like to fill...
Please, I need a card, please. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on the agenda, please fill out a card and hand it up to staff, they'll make it much more...
Do you want a card? You have to...
That is happening.
I'm sorry. Pardon me. You don't need a card.
Wait, wait.
I also need a card for my name, anything?
Thank you. Ms. Angela Fruci?
Fruci.
Fruci, please, ma'am, thank you so much for being here this evening.
I originally wasn't going to say anything, because I'd become overly emotional, but I'll pick up where Gino left off, which is just that I would encourage you, every single one of you, if you're truly responsible people of the county, city council, to drive up, um, Templeton Avenue and see where, how steep this curve is, and where the development is going to be. Just tonight, when we were coming to this meeting, we, we went to all get into a car, and there was a car coming up the hill, right at the peak of the curve, at the, where the curve bends the most. This other vehicle had to stop, because it could not even execute around the curve because of the cars that are parked on either side. So, you know, beyond that, Gino has said it all, we said everything in our representation, but I really would encourage you all to drive up and see for yourself what this project, you know, is going to mean for parking and our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fruci. All right, the next... Oh, this is for item number eight. Okay, sir, what, what number did you want to speak to?
I'm a little...
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, is that okay?
Why don't we hand him the mic, if, if, if we can? Okay.
I'm a little confused, and I don't know the number.
Okay.
I was concerned about this issue today, so I decided I would drive up Templeton Street.
Okay.
And as I came up Templeton Street, I arrived at a turn, which is a right-hand turn, at the top of Templeton, going that way out towards the ocean. And I noticed the street I was on was no longer Templeton Street. And I don't understand the, the change of the name of the street, and it went over to cracker. And I, so I'm having a difficult time understanding what, how properties are moving in that area that we want to make changes to.
Okay, Mr. Varney, right, got it. Is there any other comment you wish to make?
I have no more comments, I'm, I'm at a loss.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at the map right now, and I see Templeton comes right in the cracker. You're right. So, I thank you for bringing that to our attention. It comes right in the cracker. All right.
Well, then, I wasn't reading the street sign properly. It must have a different sign. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right.
May I?
Are you, this is developer?
I think, I think you want to wait for them to...
Right, that's coming, that's coming next. All right, request permission to close the public hearing at this time?
Close the public hearing?
Uh, first, it says second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the public hearing on this item is now closed. If I am not mistaken, Mr. Palin, we do have the developer here?
Project architect.
The project architect?
Property owners here also.
I'm sorry, who?
Property owners.
Oh, the property owner, okay. I'm sure my colleagues may have some questions for you. I'm sure you've heard some of the concerns tonight, and if you would speak on them, that would be great, and I'll open it up to my colleagues if they have any further questions. But you go ahead, sir.
Could you, running? Vice Chair, and also city council members, my name's Tom Lau, the architect of the project. First of all, I would like to, thanks to staff, you know, helping us, you know, so we can come before you for approval tonight. For the, for the house sizes, first of all, it's less than twenty-five-hundred, not four-thousand square feet.
Oh.
So, we just want to make sure that, okay?
Lot, lot sizes.
Lot sizes are around thirty-five-hundred to four-thousand, yes. And we do have two-car garage, but on the driveway is wide enough to park two more cars. So, basically, we can have, have four cars. Now, every single driveway is ninety-degree to the street, so, which is the standard for every single driver, you know, if you talk to the Public Works Department, so that it's easier to turn in and out. And also, the house is set back, so the visibility for the car to get out is a lot easier, because there's no car blocking. Now, we understand that because of this development, you know, we lose some street parkings, but at the same time, we provide our sufficient parking. Now, if you're looking at, it's only four car cars, so basically, we're taking our four cars. But at the same time, you know, we provide sixteen cars parking for our own lot. So, we're hoping, you know, that, you know, would get the support, you know, from the city council to look at it, hey, we do have, we do comply with the city code requirement, and plus, you know, more than sufficient parking for our own projects. But at the same time, we understand that, you know, the general public have issue about the public parking, but we are looking at, you know, four different cars only. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from my council members? Anyone? Uh, Councilmember Dejia Vani.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, thank you for being here. I have a couple of questions. I think the concern about the steepness when, I guess, when you back out, it is a pretty narrow street, and we've all been up there. And I have a question in regards to the, I guess it would be our staff, or you as well, the, on the size, use of the driveway, but is it steep when it comes up? Or how, how can you change that?
Actually, the parking space is nineteen, I don't think the slope is nineteen percent because I just look at it, some of them ranging from ten to fifteen percent. So, which is normal, but usually, what we would do is the first five feet, we want them to get as less as possible, around five percent. So that will be easier for the car to back out and yin to the garage. So, so that would reduce the speed already for the car backing out.
So the grade is less?
Yeah.
Okay, the grade is less. And then, when you were also talking about the, the ability, or how many bedrooms are there, again, in total?
Four bedroom each.
Four?
Yeah.
And then, do we have a bathroom downstairs as well?
Yes, we, yes, we do.
On the lower unit? Well, because I remember when we had the, the issue of like, when people could take that house, take houses, and we had it in planning, and because they asked them to remove the bathroom downstairs in order to avoid, to make it more people moving in? We've had that issue before. Did planning go through that?
Sorry, yeah, we reviewed the floor plan and, and on the.
On the bottom floor?
On the ground level, there, there's one, one bedroom and a bathroom.
Yeah, yes, one bedroom, one bath, it's inside the bedroom, it's not a.
And so, I mean, if, if someone wanted to go through the process at a future date to convert it to an ADU, I don't think they would be limited by that because our ordinance would allow that with, with the proper permitting process. The previous project that, that I brought before the council.
Correct, thank you for.
Was, was, was different, a different scenario because that was a duplex. And, and it, the, the parking is based for a duplex on the number of bedrooms per unit. So it, it, it's a different scenario. The ordinance that the, for an accessory dwelling unit in a single-family home allows it to be exempt from parking so long as that it is owner occupied. So these homes, just, just like any other single-family home in a single-family district, would be allowed to apply for an ADU. The case where you have a duplex, you already have two dwelling units, you cannot add a third unit and call it an ADU and be exempt from parking.
Okay, so that's why we had the removal of the bathroom on the, on the bottom.
If I may.
Sorry.
To assist Councilmember Dejia Vani.
Thank you.
That particular project, which we were concerned, basically, there's a term called superhomes. And I do recall that project as well.
Thank you.
That was six bedrooms and six bathrooms. And we asked them to reduce the number of bathrooms because why would you need a bathroom for each bedroom? We know what that was going to be used for.
Yes, you're right.
But in this particular case, correct me if I'm wrong, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, it's four bedrooms, three bathrooms.
Three and a half.
Three and a half, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. And then I just have a quick question for Mr. Chu, if he doesn't mind. I don't know if it's applicable for, for this item, but the way that street, I don't know if, are the council members, it is in pretty bad shape. Is that, is that on the list to be fixed, or?
There's a particular, there's a particular area that we are taking a look at, but we also have a condition that as a result of some of the utility work that will go on for this project, that they would have to restore the pavement back to the nearest concrete joint. This is a concrete section of pavement, and so we have a condition for that to be performed.
Yeah, because I too drove up there, and it was, it's not the best condition, and it's pretty narrow for our emergency vehicles if it's, a car is parked on both sides, right? But does it meet the criteria of safety?
Yeah, I mean, it's an existing condition, existing road. It doesn't meet the nexus in terms of one developer, you know, requiring to fix an existing situation.
Correct.
But we do have a requirement in regards to any damage as a result of the construction will need to be repaired to the satisfaction.
Yeah, and as for the city, we're hopefully, we'll help these, help these people with this.
Yeah, there is an area that we are looking into that, you know, does need to be addressed at this moment.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all for this time. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejia Vani, anyone else?
I have a question.
Councilmember Dr. Rod.
What's going to happen with the existing vegetation? I know on some of these maps, it's like, it says here, it states that keep existing vegetation because I know that whole area, I live close to that neighborhood, and I've been on that road, it's very narrow. But it's also a beautiful place of greenery.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be, what's gonna happen to it? Can you define more about what's gonna happen to that whole area?
If you go back to one of the picture, I think there's a trees on the top.
Okay.
Well, pretty much all the existing trees on the back will remain.
Okay.
Yeah, because our house, because this is a steep hillside, we're stepping the house, so the setback requirement on all this, we will not extend that far back. I mean, if you, if you look at your site plan, you know, you will see all the, most of the trees are. But the fact is remain.
So the trees are remaining?
Yeah, pretty much.
But that, okay, got you. And maybe there's a question to staff, why wasn't this developed years before? Was it like too dangerous to develop there, or? Just a, you know, if you don't have an answer, it's fine.
I don't have a good answer, but I think a guess it would be because of the expense of developing this deep block.
Okay.
You know, with today's property values, it becomes.
Right. Because I was just wondering, it's such a dense area, and it's, there's already houses there. So I'm like, why is it taking this long?
It's basically the economics of development.
Economics?
Land values have gone, so, you know, have appreciated so much. And now, you know, the pro forma, so to speak, for developing sites like this works, so. That's why we only deal with, any of the sites we deal with anymore, you know, tougher sites in terms of grade and.
Right.
Infrastructure.
Thank you, oh, anything else? Councilmember Dr. Rod?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Manalo?
So the question I have, it's for residential units, right?
For single-family.
For single-family.
Detached, single-family.
Detached, okay. And then, I mean, this is probably not within this public hearing or not, but how do we, I mean, that's probably when we move forward and talk about other ordinances. But I guess my concern is, is for it not to become short-term rentals in the future. And I, and I think that's something that we deal with on a policy level on a larger realm. But, you know, that's what I've seen, you know, and not saying that this will become it, but, you know, it's, it's a concern around having just short-term rentals versus having families reside in the units. So, yeah. But I will say that the design, as far as having a very steep slope, the design, and I'm, I'm quite impressed on how you've been able to work with the slope on there. But that was just my, my question, because it is, you said the owners aren't here?
Yes, they, one of the owners is here. Actually, my understanding, when we worked with our clients, even though total four homes, basically, they want to occupy two already. So, so in a way, you know, is, if we're for sales, then we'll be two only.
Oh.
So that's how we start the project.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So they'll be, oh, they want to live in the two?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Manalo? Thank you so much. My questions were answered, thank you. All right.
A quick one.
Oh, Councilmember Dejia Vani.
Yeah, I see here in the, where Commissioner Crump added there may be no parking signs posted during construction. Were all these, when I read this, you did take any consideration of these part of the conditions? For, during the construction, because they had a problem during the construction? And I see Commissioner Crump added that there may be no parking signs posted during the construction?
That's correct.
And that's all in a, sorry, thank you.
The city's Public Works Department will issue a parking permit for the construction vehicles and a haul route, and so that'll be reviewed at the time of construction.
Okay, so they'll be considered that not to always go up and down the Templeton area?
Well, this is a one-way street.
Yeah.
There's not any reason that we could see that we would reverse traffic for construction vehicles. The project's actually going to be, would be constructed in stages where one half of the site would be used for parking construction vehicles while the other, where the first two homes were built, the lots for the second two homes would be used for staging construction after rough grading.
Okay, and then any of your other concerns, either neighbors can come and speak with you as well, obviously, if they have problems?
We're always available to answer any questions. And if there are any problems with construction vehicles parking where they're not supposed to park outside of the boundaries of their permit, or parking illegally, of course, the neighbors can always come to planning or engineering.
Because we do have those kind of ordinances on the construction.
We, we actually approve a haul route permit and a construction vehicle parking permit, temporary parking permits, is my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Yes, for, for any type of construction project, the contractors do have the ability to request parking obstruction permits from, from the Public Works Department, and we would review those on a case-by-case, and if appropriate, we would issue those so that they could use some of the spaces right in front of the property for construction purposes.
Yeah, but, and they'll be, the neighbors will be considered in this?
Yeah, I mean, as, as Mike mentioned, I mean, we're, we're always available to address any concerns and to talk to the neighbors. If, if they're constructing in a way that's not, not appropriate, we have our inspectors out there, code enforcement to.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Thank you, Ben, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you, I have a question, and maybe this is for staff. The concern was that I heard also from, from managers that it's a narrow slope and you can't see cars, right, coming from a certain area?
Yes.
Is that correct? Or is it visibility?
Giving it a narrow street?
Yeah, is it visibility-wise, because when they turn, is there an issue on that, on the curve?
So my under, my understanding is, is the concern when you're driving up to Templeton and then making that wide, that right turn there, because it's only, it's one way that direction. When you're, when you're coming up Templeton, making that right.
Right.
It's, it's, it's somewhat steep and somewhat narrow. There are cars parked on both sides of the street. So that was a concern that was expressed.
The project at this stage isn't fully designed, and all the details haven't been worked out yet, but typically, when they get into further detailed design, we work with, if necessary, work with the engineers to flesh out some of these situations in terms of visibility, steep this, and those things, yes.
Great, no, I mean, I guess that's, that's one thing I, it's great to hear that staff is going to work around, kind of.
Yeah, fortunately.
How to be safer and more visible, I guess, now that there's going to be more people, like, living, and then also more cars entering and exiting.
That's correct, now that this, if, if this project is approved, then it will be occupied site as opposed to a vacant site, and then we would look at the accessing the site and exiting the site. Fortunately, it's on the long side of the curve, and so typically, that works better than being on the inside of the curve in terms of visibility.
Do those, do those mirrors work?
I was gonna.
You know, there's times when they have, like, like, it's not visible, or it's dangerous, and they have those mirrors.
Concave mirrors.
Yeah, concave mirrors.
Typically, in, in the public works field, we don't rely on those types of mirrors in the public right-of-way. Typically, those are for garages and those type of situations. In the public right-of-way, there's, there's a lot of issues in terms of the elements, the adjustments, the sun, the glare, that typically results in those not being used in the public right-of-way for that reason, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Only one, Mr. Chu, just one quick question, poor Mr. Chu. How about any signage, or any, while we're on the subject of the curve? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes, if necessary, signage, warning signs, if necessary, you know, curve ahead or slow. Those things are all fleshed out during the detailed design.
Can we make that part of any conditions, Vice Mayor?
Well, I feel that Public Works, you're the experts, and we are all concerned about safety, and I would hope.
Yeah.
That appropriate signs would go up should we approve this project during the course of construction.
And after, right?
Again, we would work with the applicants, engineers, to flesh out appropriate signage if necessary, or, or other types of traffic measures.
Now, as for regulatory signs, like yellow signs, steep curve ahead, or limited visibility, I think you have to get, go through the state and get approval for that, for regulatory signs? Yellow or?
Yeah, if, if we use a standard pre-approved signage from the MUTCD, then local agencies can, can use those at, at our discretion. There's certain signage that would require city council approval on.
Oh, okay.
And in those situations, we would present something to city council for those types of signs.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so. I would need to, okay, we, I would entertain a motion if we want to adopt the resolution. Anyone? I will make the motion that we adopt the resolution. Well, anyone else second?
A second?
All right, first and the second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dejia Vani?
Given the fact that Mr. Chu is going to be available to the residents, and safety concerns will be addressed, it'll be an aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is item number eight, use permit UPR dash three dash one nine dash one three nine three six, and design review DR dash four dash one eight dash one three four two four. Expansion of an existing two-story medical office building at two-one-one Eastmore. And Mr. Lockhausen?
Thank you, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request for an expansion of an existing two-story office building by NEMs at two-eleven Eastmore Avenue. The project's been before the planning commission, and they've forwarded it to the city council for review. Project sites located generally at the northeast intersection of Eastmore Avenue and Zeta Manor, and an existing office building occupies the site. The proposal is to replace an existing one-story portion of this office building, which is a twelve-hundred-square-foot lab with a two-story medical office use consisting largely of examination space. This would result in a building that would provide approximately eighty-three hundred square feet of medical office space on the ground floor, and eighty-one hundred square feet of medical office space on the second floor for a total of about a sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot building. This is a site photo from Eastmore Avenue, looking toward the northwest at the existing office, which is here. On the right side of the photo is. office, which is here. On the right side of the photo is the parking lot that serves the existing office building. This is a site photo from Zeta Manor looking to the southeast. This is a secondary project entrance which exists. It, however, is not used. The only access to the site is via Eastmore Avenue. And this is the area, this is the one-story structure behind this tree that would be removed and replaced with a two-story building. The project's surrounded by townhouses to the west and to the south across Eastmore Avenue, as well as single-family residential neighborhood that exists to the north on Zeta Manor. This is the proposed site plan. This is the location of the office building expansion. It's a little blow-up of what that is. This is the existing office building, and this is where the proposed two-story addition would occur, again, to the north and to the northeast of the existing building. This is the proposed first floor. As I indicated previously, we're looking at essentially laboratory space, examination room-type uses here. Proposed second floor, examination space. These are the proposed east and south elevations. The city staff has issued some conditions of approval, which I think we have, this is the north and west elevations that we have, may have listed here, yes, conditions of approval concerning some of the architectural elements. We wanted to make sure that the project continued to provide an appealing architectural presence in the neighborhood. We've required some additional awnings between the first and second floor, extending on the east side of the building and the north elevation as well. These would be constructed from galvanized metal so as to resist rust, and painted the same color as the decorative fence, which we've actually found quite attractive and wanted to carry that on to the building in terms of its quality and color. We've also required installation of some trellises in between proposed windows, extending from the ground to the underside of the awning to provide further building articulation. The city council is requested to approve a use permit in determining the land use compatibility for that. The council's requested to examine the compatibility with existing uses. Of course, there's already an existing office building on the site. Council needs to determine that an expansion of that is compatible with that use and the adjacent residential uses. Infrastructural capacity's been determined by the engineering division to be sufficient for that site, and the fire department has also reviewed this and found no issues with infrastructural issue, capacity to serve the addition. The last is parking and circulation. The city was requested to approve a site plan that provides 55 parking spaces. This meets the parking space requirement identified by the zoning ordinance for a 16,500-square-foot building. The parking layout would essentially remain the same as exists on the site today. Some of the parking aisles are substandard to the current zoning ordinance requirement of 26 feet, however, the parking lot seems to be functioning fine, and so there's really not any feasible way of providing any additional width. The proposal's exempt from CEQA. At the planning commission meeting, the, a, a neighbor, I think a couple of neighbors had expressed some concern about traffic visibility at the intersection of Zeta Manor and Eastmore Avenue. This is currently an intersection that has no stop signs other than the streets that are feeding into it. So Zeta Manor has to stop at Eastmore Avenue to traffic east and westbound, essentially does not stop. There are, have been some issues expressed, this is essentially an existing condition. There have been some concerns with the safety of motorists pulling out in the, I think mostly in the eastbound direction, even the westbound direction, related to the visibility. There was a traffic study that was actually prepared for this project, and that traffic study did take a look and made some recommendations about some potential additional red curbing in this area. This is something that the Traffic Safety Committee would normally take up. At the planning commission meeting, the, the neighbor who brought this issue up was directed by the planning commission and staff to go ahead and request that the Traffic Safety Committee consider that, and so that is still something that's available, excuse me, to that person. Again, it's an existing condition. This project, the traffic study found, does not exacerbate that condition at all. Site's sole ingress and egress is further down here, and there have been some, again, a recommendation that the city can consider requiring some additional red zone at the project driveway. Planning Commission recommending approval of the project. If there's any questions, the staff's available to answer. Those, and the applicants are here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhausen. Any comments from council?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up to public hearing. I do have a couple of cards.
Motion to open public hearing?
Oh, no motion. Boy, I gotta remember that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, I do have a couple of cards, and we'll start off with Ms. Marion Seki. Thank you. Excuse me, sorry.
You know, I don't know how many times I've been here. I think I've been living on Zeta Manor for 42 years. I've spoken to this council, previous council, maybe six or seven times regarding a four-way stop sign for Zeta Manor. It is insane to get out of Zeta Manor, and we've already put in that six-foot corner. It's not enough. You know, Daly City is not known for sun, but when you come out of that and we have a sunny day, that is awful. It is blind, blinding. And I have to drive like this and creep out. I almost have to tell my husband, get out and walk across the street so I can get out. I'm not kidding. And then when you have Pauline Brown Elementary School coming up, Eastmore High School, Westmore High School coming down, it's impossible to get out of that street safely. Now, you're going to put in 55 parking spaces. How many employees are going to work at that place? You're going to make that second floor office examination rooms, you're increasing traffic, people are going to be constantly coming to visit doctors, making visits, and you're going to only use Eastmore as your driveway, because you don't want to use Zeta Manor, you'll never get out of there. You really got to consider putting a stop sign. I've had meetings with council members at my house, I've had petitions from every neighbor saying we want it, and I don't know what it's going to take short of one of us getting killed crossing that street, really. You've got to consider, and then I understand Pauline Brown is going to give up part of their schoolyard for teacher housing. You don't think that's going to impact Eastmore? So do I have to come again to speak before you on that flow of traffic from the teachers, from the school, then those, all the new people that are going to be using this? I have nothing against building the second floor. I just want a four-way stop sign, please.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Augustus Taggann? Ta-
Taggann?
Tag, Taggann? Okay, good evening.
Good evening, yeah. Thank you, commissioners and Vice Mayor. I have a concern about short-term impact of the project, parking, again. Just want to make sure that the contractors are, are limited to parking within the facility.
Okay.
As, as you know, Zeta Manor is very, is very, we have limited parking, day or night, and, you know, with the construction happening, and of course, you know, the, the workers coming, and then long-term, more workers coming through the, through the site, you know, it's, it will impact our street and also our, our quality of life at Zeta Manor. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the applicants, you know, follow the, the rules and keep the, the, the parking limited to the site during construction.
Thank you. All right. All right, I have no other cards at this time, and I'm going to close the public comment. Do we have additional questions from council to staff regarding?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember DeGiovanini?
Yeah, I just want to know if I could ask the applicant, or should I wait till after you close the public hearing?
Oh, it's closed at this time. Public hearing is now closed.
Yeah.
But you can, you can still, we can, you can ask the applicant, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Was, is the applicant here this evening? Oh, please, step up, we may have some questions for you, or at least Councilmember DeGiovanini.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Dan Boyle. I work for MCG Architecture, and we represent Northeast Medical Services, who's the-
Can you speak up a little bit, so?
Oh. Hi, I'm Dan Boyle. I work for MCG Architecture. We represent Northeast Medical Services, who's the applicant, who's the property owner here.
Okay, all right. Councilmember DeGiovanini?
Thank you for being here. Thank you very much, and this also may include staff. In regards to, you already heard the issues from the, the residents, and I know that you guys have been really great neighbors, and I appreciate that. So 55 parking spots. Is there any, in your medical facilities, any way you give people like passes with, like, you know, like when you're a patient, you put a pass in, in the window to make sure they park in your parking lot, and if they don't, then we can figure out something that if they park on the street is still public. But I don't know, to try to come up with something to make sure that they are parking at your facility rather than on our street? Is there any suggestion, or?
Sure.
Like a NEMS pass, or?
My name is Johnson.
Welcome.
I'm the CFO for Northeast Medical Services. I think regarding the parking spaces, I believe there's enough parking within the confines of the, of the, of the area itself that we won't have to, our patients probably won't even need to go outside.
Yeah, is there any way to encourage them, like?
Just through our own education, I'm sorry.
The distance from the nearest residential parking would be quite a ways, because is there's no pedestrian access through the gate on Zeta Manor, so you have to walk all the way to the front door.
Oh.
It's just much easier to park in their parking lot.
Oh, okay, so it, just, just the setup itself actually encourages them to do that. Thank you, thank you for that, just for clarification. And I, that corner is, is crazy with the four-way stop sign, so probably not for you guys, but for our, again, Mr. Chu, for, would you mind? For, I know that, that she has campaigned for a four-way forever, or did it ever get looked at, and, because I know this has been an ongoing issue with Pauline Brown and Westmore College students coming early in the mornings and the afternoons?
Yeah, so all stop sign requests are reviewed by our Traffic Safety Committee, and there's also specific warrant requirements in order to justify installation of a stop sign, and so there's, there's volume requirements in terms of, and also accident requirements. These regulations, these warrants are set by the state in regards to, if you meet these triggers, then that justifies a stop sign, and the reason for that is that you don't want to have a lot of stop signs that cause significant inconvenience to the, to the motorists, because what ends up happening is then, then they start ignoring the stop signs, and for that reason, the state has warrants that need to be met. And later on, if, if there's additional development at the school in regards to housing, or whatever type of expansion or change of use, there'll be additional traffic studies requested at that time to, to see if there's any impact.
Yeah, because probably the increase of volume maybe will cause the, that it might qualify, right?
Yeah.
Probably in the beginning, when they first asked, it didn't have as much, but I know that it's a significant impact in traffic, when you go down the road.
Development itself, I mean, based on the, the traffic studies provided by the cons, the applicant and reviewed by our traffic engineer, there, at this moment, there isn't enough to, to trigger that.
Okay, not yet, but you, you can also look at it again, or?
Well, we can definitely look at it. Again, it needs to be gone through our Traffic Safety Committee, which has, as you know, several different departments that kind of consider that. So when we get those requests, then that's where we direct it to, is directed
Right, given the fact that they're going to have 55, but thankfully, that you're where your location is, is a good location, so that the patients are closer to the thing. I know you have a lot of seniors and stuff that you take care of, so thank you for that. I'm, I'm okay, thank you.
Hi, hello, sorry, my name is Jessica. I also work for Northeast Medical Services. I just wanted to address the construction concern. We will be parking all of our construction vehicles inside the parking lot while construction is happening, so it will not impact the neighboring parking areas, so.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember DeGiovanini?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Manalo.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking on that item. That was my question around construction parking from the resident, and so that's good to know that it'll be within your vicinity. Also, I just wanted to know, I know, Mr. Chu, you talked about how the issue around the four-way has to go through the traffic committee. So just history-wise, has this been studied? I just need to know around timeline, the, has the request been studied in the past?
Yes, so, so prior to this expansion request, that request has, has been brought up, and it, at that time, it was looked at by the Traffic Safety Committee.
Okay. And, and it did not meet the threshold?
Correct, didn't have sufficient warrants at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. I just want to make a comment on a couple of things. How many parking spots are available on that site now?
The number of parking spaces, I believe, is the same number, 55.
It is, I counted it.
Yeah. Is that a trick question?
Yeah, yeah, and then on the outs, the business, what are the hours of the business?
We run 8:30 to 5:00.
Thank you.
Monday through Friday, and we run every other Saturday.
Okay, because I count 24 parking spaces on the outside on the streets as well, alongside the business, to include part on Zeta Manor. So after 5:00, 5:30, then if there are any patients who decide to walk into the building, those parking spots would be clear. My other comment I would like to make is, Mr. Chu, thank you for the information regarding the stop sign. A lot of folks within the city request stop signs, a lot of folks request, request speed bumps, but it has to go through a committee based upon standards, and it's, I'm sorry to say, what, you're waiting for an accident to happen before you folks would do something? Well, if there's no statistics, then why would we slow down traffic or put in something that's not needed? So Zeta Manor's been there a long time. How long has this building been there, NEMS? Five years, 10 years?
No, this building's been there since at least the 1960s, I believe, been 1960s.
So the folks that live on Zeta, they've always had to deal with this problem with their building there, coming out, heading southbound on Zeta to go east and west on
Conceivably true, yes.
So that's an existing condition. Well, I have no further comments I'd like to make, but I just wanted to put out that for part of the record. Thank you. All right.
I have no comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Rod. All right, thank you so much. Okay, so is anyone willing to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution?
Your second?
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Ms. DeGiovanini?
Aye, and I know that they'll look at it as a traffic committee, thank you.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, thank you, Mr. Lockhausen, and thank you, staff, and Mr. Chu, and everyone.
Thank you for staff.
Being here. All right, the next item is appointments, board, commission member, membership of committee appointments. Anyone? None. All right, we'll go next, item number nine, council committee reports. Anyone? Going once? Going twice? All right, city council reports.
I do.
Councilmember Manalo, please.
Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. On May 16, I, I came a little later, but I know that there was the Daly City Arts and Culture exhibit, and right now, there's amazing artwork in the rotunda. We have artists Elaine Velasquez, Dizon, Adrian Orella, and Yvonne Newhouse until August 13.
August 13. So if you haven't checked it out, it's a free exhibit, and it's right on the third floor of City Hall. On May 17, I had the pleasure of joining Elaine Francisco, who is a Daly City teacher who retired and is from teaching for over 20 years. On May 18, I had the pleasure of joining the Tomassians USA for their 32nd anniversary, and also was their, was the Philippine Consul General and also Councilmember Dejio Vani. Oh, and on May 22, with Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Dejio Vani and Supervisor Canapa, we joined the IFtar at Westmore High School, which is its annual event there, filled with community and Vice Mayor's favorite thing, food. So it's breaking the fast, right?
Thank you.
And on May 23, there was an inaugural event that happened in Redwood City, the San Mateo Asian Pacific Islander event that had appointed officials and elected officials to talk about what they can do together, since there's a large Asian Pacific Islander population in the whole San Mateo County. And Vice Mayor and Dr. Rod Dasmagbal was present. Lastly, on May 24, at Panorama School, there is a proclamation from the city council for the students and the teacher. Councilmember Pamela Dejio Vani was there as well, but it was really a time to honor the kids. They've been donating to the pantry for five years, so really teaching young people empathy and to give back. And so that is the last of the events, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Dejio Vani?
Thank you. I don't want to double repeat because we all at the same one. I'll just make it quickly. We both attended, Councilmember Manalo and I, the Elaine retirement, and also the Panorama Schools, you heard, I just got a list. And the great thing was that we went, also I went, I attended the Alice Kumares event that was prior to the Tomassians. Alice Kumares, as you heard, was, deals with domestic violence, especially I've known Alice Bulos, that was the founder dealing in the Filipino community. And also Memorial Day, I was at Cypress Lawn with Supervisor David Canapa. And the Italian Catholic Federation had an event with a Jefferson Union High School District graduating class of 2019. They held a mass at Holy Angels and a small presentation. And then also the Active Adults and Seniors Event that we had, I'll let the Vice Mayor and everyone expand on that event. It was a great time there as well. And Arts and Culture, as she said, these are like once in a lifetime, you get to see these artists. And I have to say, given the Asian Heritage Month celebration, it's very important that people take the time, bring their families, go upstairs, and view such art that you'll never see again. So I think that's it for now for that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejio Vani. Dr. Rod Dasmagbal, you have anything?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
So on May 15, Councilmember Dejio Vani and Councilmember Justin Manalo and I attended the Daly City Retired Employees Association luncheon.
Yeah, that was great.
That was, that was great. So we got to hear stories of, like war stories working here. But I really appreciated the stories, narratives, gives me a context of like how we've grown as a city. I also had the honor to be the keynote speaker for the City College of San Francisco Filipino graduation, which was their second annual. And then later on that night, I got to attend, or later down that weekend, I got to attend the Spotlight Dance Competition in Santa Clara, where the Westlake School of Performing Arts totally killed it, and shout out to my daughter who won Miss Junior Spotlight. Didn't expect anything, but she came out and won the whole thing, so. And kudos to the artists that are exhibited here at City Hall. A lot of them, either I've worked with as a student at SF State or are like family friends to me, so their work is very, very, I think people should go and check it out, because in terms of understanding like the Asian Pacific Islander experience and understanding that these are women artists and coming from their perspectives, it gives you another angle of like how their realities are played out in real life. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge Carlton Yi, Head Scout Master, Troop Leader, the Boy Scouts of America, and two scouts that he has with him today. Apparently, that's part of the, going through the training of being a great future leader is to also see how government works. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having us.
And before any of the council members leave, stick around for a minute because they always like to get a picture, okay?
Of course.
Okay, not yet, not yet. All right. Everybody here on council forgot an event.
I know.
What, what was it?
Oh, it was about her award as well.
Oh, no, no. The Shyne event.
Oh, the best, oh my gosh.
Did we talk about that the last time? No, we didn't, okay.
It was worn down rain, right?
That's okay, it was raining, but we can go inside and through the support of Supervisor David Canapa, and as Councilmember Manalo alluded to it earlier, where else can you go to a Family Day event, a fair, and eat for free? So it was very good. So thank you for the folks, Pacific Islanders together, for putting that event together, and it was, it was a great event. Councilmember Dejio Vani, you showed up later on to give recognition to Ms. Raina Maiafuah, who helped put it together. I was at the IFtar event. Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, and yep, that's my favorite subject, it's food. I'd like to make mention also, at the last council meeting, I had spoke about the library, DCPLA, and I said that my name wasn't on the list as a donor. Well, that was my mistake, because that was from 2018, but they assured me I'll be on the list for next year. We have two more items. Council Dejio Vani alluded to it. They had the Senior Adult Health Fair at Pacelli Gymnasium, and this was the third annual, the first time I have ever went to it. And, well, I'll never miss it again. Not that I did any exercise, but they had all the seniors up in the front dancing, I think they call it zumba, but they were out there, and good resource information to have and to visit. Lastly, and near and dear to my heart, you know, Daly City, we treat our, we treat staff as our family. Councilmember Dejio Vani and myself had the opportunity, thank you, City Manager, Ms. Malpe, to invite me to the first annual chili cook-off.
Oh, God.
At Water and Waste Water Treatment Plant.
And Nida.
Oh, my wife came as well at the last minute, but when you're there, it's the feeling that you get that you are part of family, and it's hard to explain, but I think that comes by as a result of being under the leadership of the Director, Tom Picalotti, because he made me feel so comfortable, and the employees and staff, it was great. But not only that, even though I did go for the food, I just want to let you know, Department of Waste Water and Water Treatment, they can burn. City Manager knows that word. For those of you who don't know, when you say somebody can burn, that means they can cook. So it was a great event, thank you for that, and.
Judge.
Oh, well, that goes without saying, thank you, Councilmember Dejio Vani. We were both judges, and the one that won, Mr. Carbo Howe, he's a brand-new employee, still on probation, but maybe this might give him a way to stick around because we love him too, especially if you cook chili like him. I do know the special ingredient that he put in there, but I'm not going to tell you because I've got to keep that a secret. Maybe he might win next year. All right, with that being said, Scout Master, did you want to say anything quickly? Oh, you just come up for a picture, huh?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
She was here about two years ago. It seemed like this parking situation never goes.
May I, may I, I know this, because our Councilwoman, Justin Manalo, is very humble. She won an award of being the Alumni of the Year 2019 for SF State, and it, on the plaque, I couldn't remember all the words, but we know it was for justice and for her values that she holds, and it's demonstrated through her work on the council. So I just wanted to acknowledge her for that, and it's well-deserved. Bravo.
Mr. Yi, yeah, I do remember you two years ago, and I think that council meeting went a long time, too, that night as well. But thank you so much for coming. It's always great to have you. All right, I'd like to adjourn this council meeting in the honor of the following, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Dejio Vani.
Yes, I'd like to close and adjourn in the memory of David Dart. He's the father of Melinda Dart, who is President of the AFT 3267 and our San Mateo County Labor Council, and a teacher and friend that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejio Vani. The category for employees and/or their immediate families are Marcial Malanao. Malanao, it's Celia, Silo Lima's, who's a video person in the back, who tapes each one of these meetings, and it's her grandfather. So we want to adjourn in memory of, again, Marcial Malanao. Can we briefly pause for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. This means our adjourn.
Thank you.